Thank you. To call the Thompson Plainboard to order, could you please take the role?
I go, Don Spain. Carrie Dickford.
Excused.
Ronald Besson.
Present.
Larry Brand.
Present.
Tim Dunham.
Present.
Scott Libby.
Present.
Andrew Lindsay.
Present.
All present except Carrie Dickford.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, on the minutes, that was primarily, I had recused for most of that, so. Then you had a chance to look at it, so I just want to make sure that you've seen that portion. Alright, so on the minutes for the April eleventh meeting. Are there any comments or emotion?
I move that we adopt the minutes, uh, the April eleven twenty twenty four, uh, meeting as.
Okay. Oh, sorry, wait a second, alright, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed, one extension, alright, thank you. Okay, election of officers. We have a motion?
Uh, I nominate Scott Libby as chair.
What, is that a no? We have second? Second, alright, any discussion? Scott, you want to say something?
Yeah, I agree. I would do it, but I, I'm not sure, I'm here, I'm missing enough for work, I'm missing meetings that I'm not sure. Or, I, I should have looked at the agenda more closely. I didn't know that was on the agenda for tonight.
If you've been absent, then it wouldn't have been easier.
Yeah. Because if I'd seen it, I would have made a nomination more quickly.
Do we want to go to a vote, or not?
Sure.
Alright. All in favor? All opposed? Alright, so, who gets your chair? You want to take your tenure?
Yeah, sure.
Right, we have to finish the elections.
Yeah. I nominate, uh, all of this vice chair.
All second.
All in favor, oh, I'm running it.
That's right.
All in favor? Reposed?
Okay. Rex, that you want to swap?
Yeah.
Alright. Give the agenda, because I obviously did not look at it. But the other stuff, not the agenda. Alright, so. First up, we have the public hearing on Stonewall Investments LLC submitted phase three and expansion of thirty-one single family lots. Five townhouses at Eagle River subdivision at two ninety-eight Lewiston Road, tax about R one lot nineteen. Alright. So, are you gonna?
Sure, I'll do a quick presentation, then we can get Gary if you want. Could you promote me to that?
So sorry about that.
That was something I did.
Nope.
You got a free plane. I'm Joe Martin, the site lines here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, we're here tonight to discuss a preliminary subdivision, a sketch site plan approval for Eagle River subdivision phase three. So the project team, Stonewall Investments, the applicant, uh, set lines is the engineer and surveyor for the project. Uh, we've been working with, uh, Peter Beagle for landscape architecture. And then Mark Hampton assisted us with wetlands and wetlands and soils. And Mark Sensei helped us with, uh, hydro geological analysis. So development review, um, we've gone back in June twenty-three, we came for you for a workshop sketch. Uh, we came back for you on March fourteenth for a pre-app. For updated number of things and incorporated comments received from the town. Uh, and then, and, uh, come back to you now in June for a preliminary sketch, um, approval, and then hopefully. Um, if we get that approval tonight, we'll come back to you before, in the next few months for our final approval. There's also some DP permits we need to get, um, this is a large enough project where it's a. Uh, considered a site location and development act permit, which is thankfully reviewed, uh, by the town as part of their review process. Uh, we've also have to submit a NRPA permit, uh, for wetland impacts. And we have submitted that, uh, that's a February, and we're still waiting to receive some comments and file approval of that. Uh, we also submitted a wetland impact permit to the US Army Corps of Engineers. And they actually issued that permit this week, but we're mostly going to have to amend that slightly to incorporate some comments from the town, which resulted in some minor. Um, increases in the wetland impacts. So a, a quick rundown of the project, uh, is it's located, the entirety of the property located in the suburban residential zone district are two. The portions of it that haven't been developed as far as the first two phases are, is primarily wooded. It has been selectively cut throughout the years, but it's primarily wooded. Uh, so the redesigned, uh, phase three will. Um, consist of thirty-one new single family lots and five two-unit townhomes, so ten units total. And that, uh, those townhomes will be located on lot forty-two, which I'll show you, uh, on the plan. Uh, all the new houses and top townhomes, we serve by private wells and, uh, subject systems, there'll be underground power run throughout the project. As part of the, um, phase three, uh, portion of the subdivision, there will be a new connection extended to Lewiston Road. Um, right now, just kind of dead end with, with a turnaround, um, from phase two, but that phase three will extend that road out to Lewiston Road. And then there'll be a sizable stormwater management system put into place. Um, there are, right now, there are two wet ponds, three soil filters proposed. Uh, there's also around each building, there's what we call a roof drip line for drip edge filter. And which that pretty much is, is it's a layer of crushed stone that's. Uh, provided around the edge of the buildings that allow that water coming off the roof to drain into that, and then just to soak into the, into the ground there. Uh, we have received a number of comments from, uh, the town. Uh, as well as the, uh, I should say, the town planning staff, as well as the. Uh, Director Public Works and the, uh, Town Peer Review Engineer. Uh, we're going through those comments right now. Uh, but there is, um, some major comments that I wanted to kind of separate out of those and go over with you. Uh, the first one is pedestrian access, when the first came before you, there was. Uh, a request from the town and the conservation commission to look at ways to incorporate more pedestrian combinations into the project. But we met with the conservation commission. Uh, we came back and we proposed, um, a kind of a walkway that extended around a circular portion of the project. That, uh, was kind of offset off the road, and that's what Sean, the plans you, you have for you. That was reviewed by the Director Public Works and the Town Peer Review Engineer, and they were not in favor of that design. Uh, so what we're probably going to come back with is. Um, amending the plans for final plan to incorporate the recommendation from the conservation commission. Which is that on all, uh, new minor roads, that one side of the road will have a. Expanded shoulder, so right now, I think it's a either one or two foot shoulder, that's part of the requirements. And instead, we'll have a four foot shoulder on one side that allows a little bit of extra space for pedestrians, bicycles, things like that. Um, we did look at trying to incorporate that into the existing roadways, that's a bill as part of phase one and phase two. Uh, but it would be a substantial, uh, impact on those existing houses. Uh, include taking up culverts, adjusting the, the existing driveways. Uh, so we're not going to be proposing them on the existing roadways, but all the new roadways. Uh, just that the new minor roads will be incorporated in that recommendation. We discussed this last time we were here, but we'll also, we're, we are also working with CMP. To obtain, uh, permission to access their trail system, um, on the CMP border, so, uh, we sent them the information. They have to do it through their process, and I actually, um, got an email from the gentleman today. That next week, he's going to be meeting with the, the right away committee, or they turned it, about to discuss this and possibly issue, uh, approval. We're also based on comments we received this week from, uh, Public Works Director, we are going to be looking at incorporating a sidewalk. Along the major portion, the major roadway that's proposed. Um, and that's from Raspberry Lane extending out to Lewiston Road. Uh, we still have to work with him to determine the extent of that sidewalk. Um, he, the Public Works Director wants that to extend all the way to Lewiston Road, I have some concerns with that. Um, since Lewiston Road is not a pedestrian friendly corridor, as you, as you all know, um, but. I think there's some middle ground we can reach to, to address his comments, uh, but also not create an unsafe, uh, situation. Um, the other, um, outstanding comment is about open space. Uh, we had requested as part of this was, um, the planning board's input on waiving that fee based on some of the accommodations we were adding for pedestrians. Since we're taking out some of those, um, I think at this point, we are just going to go in for it and pay the annual fee. Once we look at the new design, about the additional gravel shoulders and the sidewalks. We may request, uh, a reduction in that fee as part of our final plan application, but, uh, that's not in front of you at this point. Stormwater, uh, we did receive a number of comments from the Town Peer Review Engineer. Um, so do need, need, do need to address those as part of the final analysis, I spoke with him today, and, uh. I think, running down his comments, um, although there are a number of comments, they're fairly. Uh, minor, should be able to be taken care of as part of that final plan application. And then the last major comment is, uh, Eastman's, the Public Works Director. He had a comment about concerns of not having access to the drainage order, that's between this project and the Ivanhoe Drive. Uh, subdivision, so we'll work on adding an easement that allows the town access to that area if they would need it, if there's ever a concern, if there's ever a. Something blocking the river or stream or whatever, they would need access to get in there, we're going to buy that on the plan, uh, somewhere. So this is an overview of the project site, so, uh, we've got, uh, two ninety-five going from, uh, kind of. Southeast to, uh, so southwest and northeast, and then one ninety-six going the other way. And the site is right in between the Blueberry Lane subdivision and the Ivanhoe Drive subdivision. And this just a zoomed in aerial, uh, might be a little tough to see there, you can see it's primarily wooded, uh, with some selective cutting, uh, that has been done in the past. So this is the updated subdivision plan. From the plan that we showed you last time we were here, we did revise a number of the lots to conform with the town ordinances. Uh, one of the issues is that when a proposed lot gets within tronland zoning. The lot frontage, or not the lot, the, the property width requirements change, so. Uh, we worked with the town to modify the, the, the lots to, to be in compliance with that, and with that, we ended up losing two lots, but. Uh, we were able to, uh, to adjust the, the remaining to, to meet their requirements. You'll see here the lot that's, um, adjacent to, to Lewiston Road, kind of on the left-hand side of the plan, that's where the townhomes are going to be. And then, um. As I said, they're Raspberry Lane, which is kind of the top of the page bill. So that's kind of Raspberry Lane, and I'll stand out to Lewiston Road, right there. And you have Strawberry Lane from there here, I'm kind of doing a long walk. With, uh, with lots being served on both sides of that, again, that's the townhome development. This is the existing, um, kind of phase one, phase two project. And then the last part of this is a little, uh, dead end still coming off. Phase one road, now it serves an additional four lots, four way to the ground, that's called Cranberry Lane. So this is a large scale project, uh, it will be completed over a number of years, uh, so we did want to, uh, please it. Primarily, we're phasing it for, um. Like, uh, performance guarantee purposes, so we split it into three different, uh, phases, so. Let me show you this, phase one, which is already been constructed. And then phase two is right there, now this is a four lots. So phase, we're on phase three A, this is of this, which will be an additional, uh, five lots. And also the townhouse development. And then we have a base three B, which is Strawberry Lane as a branch around there. Uh, I don't know the exact number of lots there, but. Number of lots there, and then the last phase is the Cranberry Lane out here, with those four additional lots. And, you know, it'll be kind of built as the market demands it, uh, the. The first three, uh, base three A, that will start construction as soon as we get approvals. Uh, but the other ones will just continue as, as, uh, market demands. This is the overall grading and drainage plan, it's a little too, um, zoomed out to give much detail, I just wanted to point a couple things here. Uh, so there are a number of stormwater management systems, I want to point out, so we have a wet pond here. Wet pond down here. Soil filter, which is a, a type of kind of detention basin. Uh, over here, another one over there, another one over there. So there's a number of different stormwater systems to make sure that we collect the runoff going off the road and the lots. Uh, to make sure we're not resulting in any increases, um, to the stormwater leaving the site.
And while you've got that up there, which, which one of those is the one that, uh, Tom Soski had an issue with, with the, the berm and the thirty inch?
So. One of the things we have proposed, so there's a, there's these drainage wells I've cut from, I don't know, south, east to west. Uh, there's one here, one here. Um, it's one, it's not a supply, but it's one of the kind of those two. And it drains a good. Not huge, but a good watershed area that, that, from up the Blueberry Lane, um, neighborhood. So that comes down here, and instead of having it directed through. Our, um, roadway, having incorporated indoor design for a wet pond, we looked at rerouting that. Pushing it over here to this, this swell. And what Tom has concerns with is that. You're taking this drainage and adding it to this one, it could result in some erosion along the side, so. We either need to look at a drainage analysis to see what the increase in the deep flow will be here, or we look at incorporating. This, um, existing drainage, uh, ditch into our stormwater system, so we'll just have to review that, so there's a little berm. Right there, that's intended to redirect the stormwater to where it goes. Uh, I will say that in, in practical application, um. These drainage dishes, except for very high flows, it's so sandy out there, by the time you get down in this area. The water is really, it's running under the ditch, I mean, it's, 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 uh, pretty amazing actually how sandy that material is. Uh, but well, that's, that's kind of one of the major comments we'll have to, uh, but the worst case scenario, we would incorporate it into this wet pond, and we just have to increase the size of that wet pond to accommodate that.
So, I'm not sure if this one is the one to do it on, but you also talk about a waiver for dead end roads.
Yes, so.
You described that on here, what you're talking about.
Sure.
And what's being requested?
So, um, there's a dead, Cranberry Lane, a dead end road, there's a CMP. Right away, or a big quarter, they, they own that, right there, so what we've done is we've extended Cranberry Lane to that with a turnaround. Um, but the ordinance requires that any dead end roads, um. They're not permitted without a waiver. But in order to, to apply for a waiver, you have to, one, provide a turnaround. And two, I believe you have to provide an easement. Or something, so it could be extended in the future, so in this case, we don't need that because it extends to the CMP. Or, so if anyone purchases, or anyone develops, I should say, property. They would have to work with CMP to get a right of way through there, which generally the CMP will grant. And they would be able to send that further out here and do whatever it all want to out there. You want to answer your question?
Oh, Dennis Fox mentioned something about on Cranberry Lane. Where, where the turnaround is for the town folks, that the, the two driveways are pretty close to the. To the turnaround.
Yeah, so if you look at this turnaround right here, so you can't have any driveway coming off the turnaround. And we have a small area right there, we're squeezing a driveway, but he's concerned that it's too close to the turnaround, and, and the other point is. This is relatively steep coming up here, so they're concerned about how are you going to get a driveway up there with a house? Uh, so we'll take a look at that, one thing we might look at doing here, instead of a, this shake turnaround, do more of a hammerhead. That will push this a little bit further and buy a little more space between that turnaround and a potential driveway. Uh, another thing we could do is. We could try to shift this. This property line between these two lots over a little bit, to buy a little bit more space here to get directly up to this, this block. Uh, so that was his primary concern with that.
Questions right now, or?
Uh, any other questions right now? Okay. Um, so the next part is the, uh, the townhouse development, which is the site plan component of, of this project. So one of the items from our last concept that we shared with you was, um, there was some. Grading that was taking place, that was within the, the seventy-five foot stream setback, which in Thompson is not permitted. Uh, and the other thing was that the buildings were too close together. Um, so that they couldn't be theoretically split in the future, which I believe that environment is going now, right yet, but. We revised the, the concept to, uh, address those comments from the town, so this is the new one, one, one thing, as I noted earlier. We previously had six buildings, we now have five. Um, we also changed the turnaround to be more of a, a loop turnaround rather than a, a hammerhead. And that just fit better with the, with the kind of site design of the project.
And, and does that loop work better and meet the fire departments?
That was one question from, from Tom, and I got a, so we sent, we did send this to the fire department. Earlier, and they, they said it was fine, but with Tom's comment, I'll send it back to them and say, hey, do you have any requirements for radius, outside radius? Uh, the one major concern was that, I think our outside radius is forty-two and a half. Feet, and, uh, Tom, uh, was saying that it should be around fifty, so if we need to, we could just adjust it as well. This is the grain plan, again, as I pointed out earlier, there is a, uh, stormwater basin soil builder. Right in this corner, and that will collect and treat all the stormwater runoff coming out from the, from the, uh. Driveways and for the roadway. The buildings will have, um, dirt edge filter, kind of crushed stone around the foundation. That will collect the roof runoff, allow that to infiltrate the existing, uh, grade. Let's see, this kind of circles behind the buildings are potential subject bed locations. Um, and then we also have a plan in our packet that shows, uh, we can meet the, um, hundred foot. Well setbacks as well, to make sure the wells are, um, situated far away, far enough away from those subjects to not be an issue.
Is the road for the town knows, uh, going to be one of the ones that you consider a minor road?
No, it's not considered a road, it's just considered, I should said, it's considered a driveway of all intents and purposes, it's a private. Private driveway similar to like what a, you know. Like a driveway into a market basket would be, type thing, so. Uh, it doesn't have to meet the classifications of road that, that would be on this.
So it's going to be wide enough for one vehicle?
No, it's twenty feet wide, so wide enough for two-way traffic.
Okay.
One thing I didn't point out too was, um, so each, um, building will have a garage, will also have, um, driveway space in front of the building. And then there'll also be some overflow parking over here for guests or additional parking when necessary. Uh, this is the, the landscape plan, which we have to get, uh, stamped by a landscape architect, and we'll have that for the, for the final plan application. Uh, but we're proposing a number of trees along the frontage with Raspberry Lane, as well as some additional trees coming in from the road. And then there are, uh, some different shrubs proposed between each of the buildings. Um, we're also, um, maintaining this existing wooden buffer between Lewiston Road and townhouse development. Uh, one, the, I mean, for the developer, I mean. He wants to make sure that these are well screened for the, for the benefit of the tenants as well. So, there's a number of mature trees between here, right at the, kind of entrance here, that will help screen this from most of them. Um, I know one concern brought up by, uh, Butters when we met with them as part of, part of the public informational meeting, was about, um. Clearing along this back area, there are a number of lots along here, um. One, there's a seventy-five foot stream setback, uh, from this, and. You are not permitted to remove those trees unless you have, there's different. Reasons you can, but in this situation, w- we're not clearing those, we're playing right to that seventy-five foot stream setback, so. I can see it'll be a pretty large standard tree remaining between the end of this development and those back of those, uh, Ivanhoe Drive blocks. With that, I can answer any questions, or go to public care, and if you wanted it.
You want to have questions before we go to public care? The, the Raspberry Lane on that, um, drawing, uh, that is where you're talking about having a sidewalk. Perhaps going up to Lewiston Road.
Yes.
But, uh, being a sidewalk to nowhere is head by deer.
Yeah, so, is there any way to reserve?
You know, so that if, you know, ten years from now, twenty years from now, Lewiston Road is entirely different than what we imagine it to be right now. Uh, that could then be sidewalk connected at the end.
Yeah, I think, I think there is, um. My, and again, um. The Public Works Director is, is on vacation this week, so I wasn't able to get a hold of him, but, um. I want to speak to him, because what I'd like to propose is that there is a walkway supposed along, uh, the front of these buildings. And I want to extend that up here, and then have a sidewalk go all the way to that intersection over here. And then for this stretch, like to install curb, installing a drainage that needs to be in there. And even leave a, a, like a five-foot, um, flat area for sidewalk in the future, but just not put the sidewalk in there. Uh, and it'd be, it'd be within the, the, uh, the right way, so when that gets transferred over to the town. They would have the ability to go in there and install that sidewalk, but pretty much prep it for sidewalk. Um, get everything done, so when they want to connect it, they can do so easily, install that. No issue. But that's one, that's one, I guess, issue. I would like input from the planning board in terms of, are they in agreement that a connection to Lewiston Road is not the. Uh, most beneficial thing, of course, I'll do whatever the, the town requires. Um, but I do have some serious concerns about extending that sidewalk all, all the way to Lewiston Road, because it does kind of invite people to, to walk out there.
Also invites little kids on their bicycles. That, that's my concern.
Yeah, so, I mean. I think there's a way to, to prep it and, and make it so it's, it's, uh, beneficial for the town in the future, if there, like you said, if there, as there ever is a sidewalk added to Lewiston Road.
One question that, that I have, uh, is, and I've heard this is very much in its infancy, so, um. But I think the TDI is potentially looking into, uh, the feasibility of extending, uh, water. And or sewer out one ninety-six Lewiston Road, as far as, I think, Meadow Cross. I'm excited. Just throwing that out.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I, I know, um, I, I know. People that are on, on the TDI, I know that's kind of planned, well, it's been planned for Thompson for a while, but it's, it's. It's going to be a very expensive proposition. Um, yeah, and I think timing wise, I, I just don't think it lines up very well for this project, I wish it did.
Yeah.
Um. But, yeah, I mean, could they, I mean, probably if they did bring it up, they'd just stub it over to this site, and in the future, it could potentially be seen in here.
Uh, I just have another question about the sidewalks, forgive me if you've already renewed this, and I guess I just wasn't comprehending how the side. There's a sidewalk on Raspberry, there's supposed to be a sidewalk on Raspberry Lane?
There is not one right now, but, uh, based on comments we received, we're going to be. Proposing a sidewalk extending from the townhomes to the intersection of Raspberry and Strawberry. Okay. Because that's, that's the segment of the road that's considered major, which, it doesn't require. Cause that's that's the segment of the road that's considered major, which it doesn't require sidewalk, but it it. Well, I should say, it requires a sidewalk unless the planning board deems that it doesn't.
Right, and then you said the minor roads are getting a wide shoulder?
Yes.
And why can't those get a sidewalk as well?
Primarily that adding a sidewalk. Pretty much doubles the cost of the road. Um cause with the sidewalk, you have curb, with curb, you have to put drainage in, and you have to carry that drainage. Along your roadway and those drainage costs about. Nothing care about costs, it's very expensive to to do that, and that's why. You see a lot of towns on the minor roads, they don't have that because you can't get the scale, you need to pay for that additional infrastructure.
So Mr. Chair, on the sidewalk, just briefly. Uh you had submitted it at three feet wide, you're now at five feet wide?
Yeah, yeah, so the three-foot wide was, that was kind of the one that was. So we had shown kind of loop. Inside this strawberry lane loop, that was kind of, was gonna be the roadway with the grass area and then a three-foot walkway. Um the director of public works and the town interior engineer had some concerns about uh maintenance of that in the future. About potential erosion issues and some stormwater concerns, um so they were not going to to recommend that, so we're just gonna take that out. Of the of the project.
And then the the very last comment on here talked about the you reviewing uh whether or not. I shouldn't say whether or not, basically you reviewing uh the comment regarding a traffic study. Can you kind of fill us in where that's at?
So when we initially did this project, we did a a traffic analysis for this project and and the traffic generation. A trip, sorry, trip generation analysis as well, so. The traffic analysis is done to determine which sections of the road are major versus minor, and that's based on the number of trips per day. Sent to each uh portion of the roadway, and then the trip generation analysis is done for kind of the whole project. And I don't remember the exact numbers, but it was less than the hundred trips during the peak hour that would require a um a traffic analysis or a. Sorry, a DOT traffic movement permit, which that's part of that, you do a more thorough traffic analysis. So from a traffic standpoint, it's considered relatively a minor increase. You should have that traffic memo in your packet there.
You talked about the in lieu fees as well briefly, I think.
Yeah.
There was a comment somewhere in here about the conservation commission finds that proposed walkway does not sufficiently, it goes into that discussion. But you are looking to go with some type of in lieu fee?
Yeah, yeah, some type of in lieu fee, and once we incorporate all that and look at. How it modifies a plan, we might come back and ask for a minor reduction in, I think the what they had recommended based on what we're proposing right now is like a. One bedroom per per house reduction. So maybe. It was based on, that's when we were doing the walkway and the trail connections to the CMP, um the cost associated with that. But we might just come back and just say, we'll just pay the in lieu fee for a bedroom.
Do you have something?
Yeah, um. On that, uh in the Raspberry Lane that goes to one ninety-six, you know. We've done this before on a few projects in town, built a sidewalk. Moved it over, so if they ever decided. To connect it, then they just create a loom of gravel should be there, and then they can pay.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, cause I think uh. Yeah. I mean, additional gravel base along that section isn't a huge deal. So there are a couple of sections where, so the the town standard is you have um curb, and then you have an esplanade. Grass esplanade, I think it's three feet maybe, you know, exactly, and then you have a five-foot sidewalk. Which we will provide um portions that we can, I am gonna work with the public works director because of. The you guys have wetland crossings, and I'd like to pinch that sidewalk up to the curb in those areas to reduce the environmental impacts of this project. Um so just being in those two small areas, we want to kind of bring the sidewalk back up to the road to minimize the weather impacts uh down the bottom.
I said one follow-up on the the Strawberry Lane.
Yep.
So you said you're you're pulling that completely?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause my, I I must have misread it, I thought you were going from the esplanade to an actual sidewalk, where you aren't.
No, well, it was, it was a, it's an esplanade, I guess you call it sidewalk, but there was just no curb. So the, they didn't feel that was um able to be maintained properly by the town without the curb.
Right.
Um so we're just pulling it out.
Seeing no other questions right now, I'm gonna open it up for public hearing. Anyone would like to speak on this, please uh come to microphone, state your name, president Satan. Do I send questions to the board? Right? Go once, one more time. All right. We have any other follow-ups, questions on this? I know there there were a lot of comments from both uh Dennis and uh Tom. You've you've addressed a number of them and are going to be addressing them. I still, this this would have been come better from from the vice chair sitting on the side, the chair. This question, I know we've always talked about the in lieu of fee as an option. When when we were looking through this, I reread it and it reads more like the in lieu fee is. If we don't agree with what the developer proposes as conservation or recreation, like. Not that the developer can say, this is what I want to do. And I I just want to throw that out there, I mean, obviously you come up and throw a proposal, it doesn't make any sense, we don't like it, we. Would say we go in on the fee. Um I think one thing we we mentioned at the the original um last meeting on this. Was this neighborhood is, you know, a great connector between Ivanhoe and Blueberry and and phase one and two. It provides um a great opportunity. For connectivity between the neighborhoods. And also, you know, potentially, uh I I don't know what the conservation commission, you know. Went through with that meeting, and I'm sure, you know, this isn't like an area where there's great conservation. Uh savings to be had or land to be set aside, uh but, you know. We're talking about the kids on the bikes, the kids walking down sidewalks. Has there been consideration of a, you know, dedicating about two acres, which I think is the minimum. That the 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 uh ordinance states um to set up. A a playground, a recreation facility, you know, or or the benefit of of. Not only this development, but the other, you know, those nearby that would have access.
So early on, we did look at providing some open space areas. And two acres and, you know, even more just a, you know, it's just a, you know. Passive recreation area that people at the HOA could kind of figure out what they want to do with it. The concern with there is is this subdivision, it's it's providing larger lots, I mean, these vary in size from one to. You know, there's some two-acre, three-acre lots, sort of larger lots, so, you know. Where I see the the real need for open space, especially recreation space, is when you have the smaller condensed um. Subdivisions without much area on the properties for. You know, individual recreation, you know, playgrounds in the backyard and swing sets, things like that. And. We just know there's a massive housing shortage right now, so we're trying to maximize. The number of lots that we built here to provide housing for people that need it. And we thought that it would make more sense to use those funds, uh the inland fee funds for some type of town. Recreation project, I know you guys will know better than I do of um the town's working on. I know one of the things that was brought up at the conservation commission was there's a. Uh railroad that is located kind of the south of this project, and there's plans, I think, in the future, potentially turn that into a pedestrian. Trail, am I making that up?
I think plans may be generous.
But just things like that, that.
No, just to tell you, it's not.
Yes.
It's not sketched out to my understanding.
So mu- the money we've been paying to that could be used for those more large-scale type projects, rather than something individually on. You know, I I've done a number of subdivisions throughout the state and a lot of towns require those open space recreation areas. And what I find is it just kind of unused. You know, unless you invest in, you know, substantial recreation facility on that, which this project doesn't really um. Makes sense. Uh so that's, I guess that's that's the biggest answer, the biggest answer was was to try to um. Provide the most amount of housing we could for the for the area.
And the, yeah, you know, the other, I I know from reading the conservation commission's note, I mean, they weren't happy with some of. You know, the the extent of the uh walkability, sidewalks and things, but it certainly. You know, I think we mentioned it too. There, there are obviously costs associated with that, but it's uh. I mean, at least from my opinion, the the walkability of these neighborhoods is critically important.
I think one thing we also looked at was. Potentially trying to put some of the. Stream border that's between this project and the Ivanhoe Drive project, put that and set up open space, but I remember. I don't know if it was Julia I spoke with you, and the town kind of said that they weren't really gonna, that wasn't something they were. Looking to be recommending for meeting the open space requirements, but I don't know if that's changed or, you know, cause we do have a substantial. Area uh between this subdivision um and one to the to the west that we could put into some type of open space for, I mean. It would be for conservation, for environmental purposes, more than recreation purposes. But it would be open space that would be owned. You know, by the HOA, that could be. Could be used by them, I guess.
Questions, cause a part of that could get to.
No, I understand. Yeah, so uh Joe and Erin met with the conservation commission, I think at the beginning of April, to discuss kind of options. To also go back to your point about the playground, I don't think the town feels like it has the capacity to take on more. Seats like this at this point, and you know that public parks and parks and markets struggle to stay fully staffed, so. Adding in maintenance or something else is just a consideration, that's what I heard from the public, the Parks and Recreation Director. Um and they met with the conservation commission, they kind of talked about a lot of the options for this, I will say that you guys were, you know, open to a lot of things at that meeting. And this isn't considered high habitat value land, it's in R two. I don't think conservation commission was interested in taking on an easement for that area, and maybe be the ones for the town who would take on it. I think that's the issue with it, uh I think, you know, it's up to the board what they want to do, if they want to request that more conservation should happen, that's. Essentially a possibility, but I do think the conservation commission has been asked and they've kind of, they've kind of given their answer.
And I'll give you a little bit of a scale for the in lieu fee. So it depends a little bit on the number of veterans, of course, but you're just saying average of three veterans for all the houses, which I'm sure will be a number, they'll have four. Actually, but I think the total in lieu fee for the project will be around eighty to eighty-five thousand dollars. So and of course, those per bedroom rates, I think, are gonna increase as the years go by, so this is a multi-year project, I'm sure that will.
Uh yeah, I just want to reiterate what Scott said, that I agree that uh walkability is critically important here. And that's why I was a little disappointed that you're not providing um sidewalks up in the whole development. Because I feel like that. Creative, better sense of community, you know, people can actually get out and walk from house to house and visit their neighbors or walk their dog or whatever. Um and you know, maybe you would consider. Instead of paying the in lieu fee, maybe you do some of that money for sidewalks.
We we had looked at that, but the the scale of the costs are are. Outweighed, I mean, the the cost of, I actually kind of looked at that um. To see what the difference would be, because if we're in more than ten, fifteen percent of the same cost, but it's four times as much, but the sidewalk in as the end. Um because it primarily because additional drainage. Make the curves work. Alright, and you know, I would say too, you know, I understand that, um you know, I live in a subdivision that doesn't have sidewalks, I'd love to have sidewalks. But. The. The ordinance has requirements for, or I should say, has, yeah, has minimum requirements for minor road classifications and. You know, I think as a town, if you want to require sidewalks, my recommendation would be to go through in that process and. You know, modify the ordinance to require those sidewalks, because. You know, as we go forward, we design these, we look at it, you know, we're we're classifying different roads to the different design requirements within the ordinance. Um and that's what we're trying to follow in this project.
You mentioned uh railroad on right where or track, just as an aside. Actually, along your side of one ninety-six Lewiston Road is where the old trolley track. Used to go. And you can still see some vestiges of it from like White House Crossing down toward town. You can actually tell that there was a trolley track. Down through there and then up the White House Crossing goes off, woods over to River Road. So you actually have a whole section along your your frontage on one ninety-six.
Is it visible in the woods, like is there a clear path?
Oh, we need up to White House Crossing, actually, yeah, there's a clear path, it even follow all the way, all the way over. And I said, this is your going along one night, there's there are various places that you can see. Uh the road dips down, goes out, it's flat, and nothing is rolling in there, so there's almost like a. A buffer of trees on each side of that.
Okay, any other questions or motions? Are there any emotions? It's eventually. I'll raise some questions first, um the last thing, just to talk about the pedestrian and bike safety and things, just, you know, Dennis. Has talked about it a lot, I I hadn't seen this last, is one, I saw, he had two messages, but. The one really talked about, you know, the master plan of the town, really trying to get more um connectivity, you had to. And I, you know, I know you're gonna be talking to him about whether or not bringing that out, or if he wants to bring it out to one ninety-six um. But I think, you know, the more you can think about what you can do within the development, it's well worth it. Any other emotions? Take a motion?
Want to go with this? Motion for the.
First, though, are you gonna do motion number one? We should have done that one a while ago, I guess, you know, we always forget that one, I'll try to remember it.
Okay. So I move the planning board concurs with Sash's conclusion that the Eagle River subdivision phase three preliminary subdivision amendment. Application materials have been submitted. And that the application is complete such that the board may proceed with substantive review of the application and identification of any further information required from the applicants.
Motion or a second?
Who seconded it? Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor? Post, show your names. All right. Uh we don't. I don't think we need to do the waiver yet.
Wherever the motion.
Page five.
Thank you. Okay, this is a motion for preliminary plan approval with conditions. I move that the application for preliminary plan approval submitted by Stonewall Investments LLC for tax map R zero one law nineteen. Be approved in accordance with one ninety three dash three and one ninety five, one ninety one dash five of the Thompson Code. With following conditions, they have potential revised initial plan and so forth. Those those conditions are. I think conditions are, they only show three on my.
That's all there is.
There is, okay. So with the three conditions as outlined on page five of this document.
Motion, we have a second. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing them, all in favor? Post, show your names. All right, um. The next item on the agenda, I think we've touched on, but we probably should bring it up since it's actually on the agenda and that's the. The sketch site plan. I don't know if you have more information um on the uh the townhouses?
Nope. I don't think there's any formal approval for that.
Yeah, no, there is that, but it's there, I want to bring it up, this is. It's an agenda item. Does anyone have any other questions on that house houses at this time? Look forward to to seeing more information on them when you guys come back.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Oh, entertainment.
One thing I'd like to bring with other, I mean, um. It leads on to the CPIC um for. And uh there was a last meeting, and it was, and one time there was a presentation done by the. Chair of the Conservation Commission, uh related to. Uh a proposal uh for. Which effectively are primarily the R three district. Uh although there was some discussion possibly of the R two. Uh after the CPIC people were talked, which now like I had said. Well, I hope you're planning on making this presentation to be planning for. Uh and uh because. Uh and the town manager uh was in attendance, quite, and we said. Well, it's been decided that all uh comments, et cetera. With regard to the entire uh. Advised zoning. Are going to all go through CPIC. Uh and that's um. So really isn't going to get into the planning board with regards to this. Then some members of CPIC were expressing concern on that. They said, well, isn't that kind of making us liars? That, because we've been telling everybody, we are only addressing the town center and not all the Alamo areas. Uh so it's like, do need to advise the rest of the planning board regarding this. So I just wanted to make that report. I'm not that we decided, or how it was decided. Uh but there wasn't anything that I could recall that we decided anyway, this board. That we are abrogating any of our rights with regard to receiving uh comments, et cetera.
Yeah, I had, I was unable to make that meeting, but uh. Uh I mean, my understanding was we were still doing the recode part, but at least last time we talked. Um Julie. Was taking our final input on or our draft input on on uh. Conditional uses and things, right? Putting that into uh what was sensitive, the consultants. And I after then I had knocked on and seen what the the current draft looks like. Um I assume all of that input was there. Um yeah, and that we would continue to work with that.
But it was a very brief discussion on that with the town manager and myself within Sky. Which was actually a meeting on something else, but basically talking about. How we're addressing the CPIC workshops and everything else. And the question was. What's the best way to do this? Because we're doing CPIC, which CPIC has a specific scope. But along with that, as you know, we're using consultants to help do a code cleanup, right? And so the real question is, do we have time to continue to bring in other workshop items to this board? At the same time as we're trying to get through the CPIC workshops, which we've promised to do, right? And so. Basically, his comment was the same comment you've heard, which is, he thought we should do what we're basically doing. That may not be something that the Conservation Committee likes or someone else doesn't like, but that was essentially what was talked about.
Yeah, I can just add, I love it that there's just concern that with how large, and I think Mark might have meant the recode project in general. That there's just concern that with how big in scope that is, because I need to bring things to you about chapter one seventy five. And chapter one ninety one, um I am just starting to have time to work on recode, uh now that Josh has joined us um. And that there's concern that if there is a like parallel effort. That it will really muddy the waters, and that was what was discussed in that regard. So it doesn't mean that that can't come to planning board, it was just. Saying it might be better if everything is going through this recode process, since it's going to be going to town meeting next year.
So I got to be, I've been sat in on a few of the CPIC meetings through the last year or so uh directly, but. Because one of the members was, you know, other. It, I mean, it seems like CPIC's got their hands full with. The, what, I can never remember, we're doing recode and code cleanup.
They do get confused, and it gets confused with everybody involved. Uh and when the town manager is talking about, he's talking about the holistic, right? Uh and that's how he was discussing there, right?
Because I still think we have valuable input for the for.
Yeah, there's no question.
I was just surprised that a proposal which affected not the town center. But affected R three, which is beyond what CPIC has been working on. And like I said, some members of CPIC were also surprised by this too, that that, but I could tell anyone. That they were now getting a proposal with regard to R three. When their focus had been entirely just on the village center and the and the recode. Aspect up, but not beyond the town center. And like I said, anytime I've been to a CPIC meeting, it's always been town center, town center, town center, nothing out. R two, R three, or whatever.
Well, CPIC is also talking about the southwest quarter, right? So. You know, I think we have to be careful stating generalities like that, but.
They're saying we've been southwest. Well, took it off there, didn't they take it off the the?
I've heard it on and off, I don't know.
Yeah, it's currently off, as far as I understood.
It's currently which, on or off?
Off, they're not doing anything regarding the southwest corner quarter that I understand, but.
Okay.
Well, I was just going to add in that I think that the fact that the code cleanup and the Thompson Center has been brought together into one full draft. Is maybe something that needs to be figured out how that's being approached, because I know CPIC is starting to gather input from the public on the recode. And I think there may have been thought that, well, they're going to get input on all of it, and so this is the right avenue to hear this input on a zoning change. Since it's the whole recap, but. That's obviously the board's decision, and if they want to hear that proposal, I'm sure we can work on that. But there was a concern about.
Still think we have time to work on.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't had a meeting since.
I wouldn't have had time to get that to the aware, like for the Conservation Commission, you know. I mean, if you want to hold a workshop for them, it's fine, but I wouldn't have had time to do any work on that, because they were barely staffed until Josh came.
And so far, you're the only one who's complained about that, having meetings.
That's right. Well, I was, I was complaining about a a decision that was made without board input. Because we hadn't had a meeting, but apparently the decision was made and it was not any input. From the board, and as far as I know, there was not any authority to have that decision made without input from the board.
But I think, I mean, it's all going to come back before us at some point. And and that. It's it, the process is only going to work well if if it comes back before us. Inter- intermediate stages, so I'm not too worried about it not coming back before us. Uh because, you know, if it's at the end, I did. Thank you, Brad Joel Hall. Um so I I expect that um now that we're all. Fully staffed, we have more time, that there may be, you know, things that will come here. I don't think the our idea, you know, before of. A workshop meeting once a month is is something that's feasible. Um but now, but now that everything is together, um in, you know, one draft. To me, it's, it's getting at these details is something we can focus on more easily than. Hey, here's what chapter six is going to look like, I mean, you gotta start from scratch. Now it's focused, we can, you know, as. As uh Sky and the planning department just thinks that it's at a point where. We can, you know, rise up and start to criticism and input and proceed um. You know, it doesn't look well, I hope.
Mister Chair, um we're going to make a motion to reconsider um election of officers. Um I hadn't studied up on this while we were talking, but. I have never even had, I've served on a lot of committees, a lot of boards, a lot of directorships, and I've never had anybody to do this, but it makes me a little nervous, but. I didn't understand what was happening um at the election of officers, and it just happened so quickly. It was no discussion and no critic- criticizing you, but. It should have been opened up to talk about what was going on there. Did you want to retire from that position?
No.
Well, I I'm sorry if this makes you uncomfortable, but I'm uncomfortable with my vote. I just thought I was just going through the motions of what was happening. And.
Um I wasn't planning that, and neither was Scott. Apparently Larry was, right? So that, you should ask Larry.
Well, um. Second, so it can be, it can, it can be on the table without a second. I just had to read up on Robert's rules order. It does have to be decided as to whether or not there would be a revote, but um. I don't agree with what I voted on. I didn't understand, I didn't understand what was going on. I thought you were retiring, I'm like, why are you telling me this? I just, you. You seemed hesitant, um you're, you are.
I just didn't want to enter into it and put him on the spot either way. That's why I just.
Well, I'm not. And it's not against you.
But like I said, if you want to know.
Okay.
The rationale, it's not Scott Ryan, it's Larry, and if one can leave the room, so.
Well, I just, I'm not happy with my vote. I'm sorry. I didn't understand what was happening. I saw um, you know, Ron's hand go up, and I'm like, I'm just going through the motions. What's that?
I thought Don was getting done too.
I, so you didn't understand it either. There was no discussion on it. Um you should have called for discussion, and I'm sorry to call you out on that, but. I didn't feel like, I didn't know what the hell was going on. Sorry, pardon my French, but I'm not happy with what happened.
I mean, I I don't know. I've only been here for an hour.
Well, I get it, and you know.
But the steps are, I I am, I am certainly willing to throw the uh.
It's been um, it's been a lot of years since I've been on this board with Ron, Don, and Don's, Don Russell was the chair when I was here last, and I am. Just, I apologize for me just allowing to go through the motions. I know we all have done that at some point or another. And I'm throwing myself under the bus. I did that, and I don't, I don't agree with my vote. So I would like to, I would like to call that motion back to be revoked on.
And I didn't know if I could vote against myself.
You probably need to recuse yourself.
Yeah, I didn't vote.
Well, I didn't vote on either vote, right? But. I'm from it, and I didn't realize you were going to do this.
No, you didn't, because I didn't know, I didn't know what was going on, I'm sorry.
To one town meeting, the, and ended up going two nights, right? Otherwise, more towns would have gone more than one night. But then this is years ago, we had a town meeting that went two nights, right? And there was a huge group there to vote either down or up on something, right? The meeting was extended to the following night. The following night, somebody did exactly what he did, because. And and Sue and I did this for a while, we stopped doing that now. We'd always vote one yes and one no, so we could bring that one, so that would. Pro- providing we were still active in town meeting, we could come back at the end if we really didn't like way something went and bring it up and and go for a revote. I'm not an attorney, but that is when the attorney ran that particular one and allowed that.
Well, I just read it right here, and if you want, I can read it to the board, but um, you know, when, what a uh, a motion to reconsider. Um is made, it doesn't need to be um seconded, and it, and it um can be discussed, and it does need to be voted on um. With a majority vote as to whether or not um it would be opened back up for consideration. So I, I don't think you need, either one of you would need to re. Re um recuse yourselves from that. Uh but I would just like it back on table, because I didn't, I didn't vote correctly, I didn't understand what was going on, and I would like to discuss it more.
Thanks, I expected the alternate nominations. Quite, quite honestly.
Can we, can we, uh, can I call the, uh, vote, can we, well, you're the, you're the chair right now, so um, all in favor of?
Reconsidering.
Yes, yeah, that's your, that's your, your words.
Okay, and all in favor?
Yeah, I I would say long again, yeah.
Well, I didn't.
Just to bring it back up, that's all, that's all we're doing. So it does say in here that Larry's uh motion has to stay, as it was written, he can make a um. An amendment, he cannot withdraw, it it is, it is a motion that has to be uh voted on. Um it said that it can um. Uh the original motion, as it was just before the vote was taken, it can be, it can amend the motion referred to a. Uh referred to a committee would take other action as well or pass or defeat it, but it, the uh, the motion has to stay the same, it sounds like, from, from what.
It was a nomination.
Yeah, so it was nomination for uh Scott Libby to be chair.
All right, and is there a second?
There would need to be a second, right? There has to be a second for that. I don't even know if there was a second. I just, everything just was a blur. I don't, I don't remember what happened. Did someone second it?
I think someone did, but I think that. Yeah, it's being reconsidered.
Yeah, we're doing it again.
For reconsideration.
So your motion. Now it's discussion. Right, now it's open for discussion.
If someone, did you second it again? I mean, if it's not seconded, then it just becomes moot.
Well, I guess that's true. Ron, do you want to second that motion? The motion um to nominate Scott Libby as chair. No, you're not, you're not seconding.
So I would like to make a motion. To nominate Don Span as chair.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? All post, forty one.
I'd like to make a motion for Scott Libby to be co-chair.
Place chair.
Place chair, sorry, sorry, different terminology. I'll second that. Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor? Show your hands. I was right in the wrong.
Can, thank you for making it easy on me. I felt really bad um about this. I I, because I did make the mistake, and I'm sorry that I, I just.
Do you want to help us adjourn that?
Yes, I will, just, you know, to finish off the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So move to any second. All in favor?